Good afternoon. I will call to order the November 16th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Rockwell, and Gisselman. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the November 2nd meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. And we have a motion and a second to all in favor. And that motion carries. Next item of business is to organize the agenda. We'll determine which items will be continued, which will be on the consent agenda, and which items we will discuss. Hard copies of the agenda are available in the hallway. Our first item is item number one, the Mount Olivet Careview Home addition at 5517 Lindale Avenue South. At the request of the applicant, we will continue that item to the December 7th meeting. Item number two is the Alma Building, 528 University Avenue Southeast, rezoning and three variances there. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item number three is the Northeast Park Recreation Building at 1500 through 1520 Johnson Street Northeast and 1601 Fillmore Street Northeast. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will also put that on consent. And finally, item number four is Wells Fargo at 1505 West Lake Street. We will discuss that item. So our agenda as amended is item number one will be continued to December 7th. Items two and three will be on the consent agenda, and we will discuss item number four. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next item of business is to go to the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. And Commissioner Slack, do you have an update from the November 5th meeting?
Thank you, President Brown. At the November 5th meeting of the Committee of the Whole, we heard five or four reports. The first was a land sale for 815.525th Avenue South. The second, a land acquisition, Mindot Land at the southeast corner of 27th Avenue Northeast and University Avenue Northeast. The third, land sale for 609 Fillmore Street Northeast. And the final one was a land acquisition at 2547 Fifth Street Northeast. Recommended motion for all four items was to approve the staff report that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. And I will take that as a motion to find that those sales are consistent with the comprehensive plan. May have a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may have a motion to continue item number one to the December 7th, 2015, meeting. We have a motion and a second. There is no further discussion, all in favor. And that motion carries. That item is continued. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda, that is items two and three. Is there anyone wishing to speak on either item two or three? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Oh, Commissioner Slack.
President Brown, I just need to recuse myself from voting on item three. As Perkins and Will, my employer, is the applicant.
All right. Thank you. And at this time, the public hearing is closed on the consent agenda items. Commissioners may have a motion to approve items two and three. And we have a motion and a second, all in favor. And Commissioner Slack abstains, that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our one item for discussion, item number four at 1505 West Lake Street, a Wells Fargo bank. And Kimberly Hollein is set.
Good evening, Commissioners. The project before you is a series of applications for reconstruction of a Wells Fargo bank facility at 1505 West Lake Street, shown here, outlined in the dark black. The site currently has an existing bank facility with seven lanes and, or seven drive-through lanes, excuse me, several surface parking stalls, and a bank that's recessed from the street. The applications required here are an expansion of non-conforming use as it relates to the drive-through facility, a variance to exceed the maximum parking requirement, that's an increase from 17 stalls to 36 stalls, a variance for sign height and sign area for wall signs on the building, and variances to freestanding signs in terms of the number of signs and the height of the signs, as well as site plan review. Jump around here. So this is the existing site layout. You can see the building is recessed from the street and separated from Lake Street with an existing parking lot. You then have the seven-lane drive-through facility on the south side of the building with some additional surface parking. Then there's a separation, there's a public alley that comes through the site out onto Humboldt Avenue South. There's parking on both sides of the alley in that location, that's also part of the existing parcel. So unique configuration here, you can see in this location, there's a driveway. This is an existing easement that dates from a previous alley vacation through the site, so that driveway provides access to another property that's not under common ownership. Just some existing photos of the site here, you can see the large drive-through facility. So the proposal at this time is to construct a building at the corner. That building would be 4,500 square feet in area. Parking would be moved behind the building. The seven-drive-through lane facility would be reduced to two ATM lanes only, with one pass-through lane that goes out to Humboldt Avenue South. And then employee parking would remain in that portion of the site that's down by the alley. The condition of this existing driveway that comes off Irving Avenue South with parallel parking stalls would not change. Interior, the building does have an entrance facing the street. This is something that's changed since the project was before you at Committee of the Whole back in July. And it also has an entrance facing the parking lot on the south. Because we're recommending denial of the parking variance, I'll focus a lot of my time on that, as well as the sign variance. The existing bank and drive-through facility were built in 1973. At that time, the site was zoned B3S1 and did not contain the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. So the drive-through facility was permitted, as were the number of parking stalls that you see on the site right now. The site now contains the pedestrian-oriented overlay district and has the, in a zone C1. The maximum parking requirement with that PO district is reduced by 25% over what it would be otherwise. So it's 1 per 200 square feet of GFA reduced by 25%, which gets this 4,500-square-foot bank facility 17 stalls as their maximum. It's a reduction from, oh, excuse me, they have 49 stalls currently and they're proposing 36. So that's a pretty significant reduction, but they're already at more than twice what their maximum would be. Staff finds that they do not have any unique circumstances here that would require them to exceed the maximum parking requirements, nor are there any practical difficulties that exist in complying. The applicant's statement of proposed use primarily uses the existing driving behaviors of employees and customers as their reason for needing the parking variance. The statement provided by the applicant in the travel demand management plan that they put together show that currently 100% of the 27 employees who work on the site drive to the site in single-occupant vehicles. The mode-share goal in the TDMP that they prepared is for 90% of employees to drive, 5% to use public transit, and 5% to bike to the site. For customers, their mode-share goal is for 70% of customers to drive to the site, 15% to use public transit, 9% to walk to the site, and 6% to bike to the site. That mode-share goal is fairly low, given the pedestrian-oriented character of this area, the transit service that's available, and the bike infrastructure that's available nearby. The site is two blocks south of the Midtown Greenway, three blocks west of the Grand Rounds Bike Trail around Lake Calhoun. It's served by midday bus transit. If you take Lake Street and Lagoon Avenue as a one-way pair, it provides service every 15 minutes in either direction throughout the day. It's also three blocks away from the Uptown Transit Center, which is served by at least five routes, which provide transit service to the entire city and beyond, out further into the metro area if needed. As far as the travel demand management plan goes, again, their mode-share goal seems low. I did talk with Public Works today, and previously, when they reviewed the TDMP for this. The TDMP has not been approved yet. They believe that the mode-share goal is too low for the site. Looking at other single-occupant commercial users that have prepared TDMPs this year, the mode-share goal for those outside of downtown, on the three that were fairly comparable, the single-occupant vehicle mode-share goal was 55% on each of those projects. And here, we're looking at 90% for employees and 70% for customers. Again, the area is very walkable and densely populated. The variance to double the maximum parking requirement would not be reasonable or in keeping with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan or the small-area plan. Again, this is in a pedestrian-oriented overlay district, which is established to encourage a walkable area and to encourage the pedestrian-oriented character of the area. The Uptown Small Area Plan was adopted in 2008. There's a lot of language in that plan about making the area more friendly for bikers and pedestrians. Specifically, there are goals in the plan to improve streets for bicycles, pedestrians, and transit. And there are several supporting policies in the plan that talk about walking and biking being the preferred mode of travel for local needs. The plan also specifically encourages employers to increase transit use by participating in what would be the equivalent of the MetroPass program. The proposed number of parking stalls, again, not a reasonable use of the property. The applicant has not demonstrated an effort to encourage walking, biking, or the use of public transportation. Staff recommends participating in the MetroPass program and providing more visible bike parking in lieu of the excessive number of parking stalls proposed. On the site plan, there is bike parking proposed between the building and the parking lot, but there's none proposed at the corner of West Lake Street and Humboldt Avenue South. You'll see in the conditions of approval later on in the staff report that that's a specific recommendation. The proposed number of parking stalls would also have adverse impacts on the essential character of the locality and be injurious to the use and enjoyment of property in the vicinity. With significant redevelopment and investment occurring in the broader area, allowing a redevelopment that's inconsistent with the adopted vision and policies for the area has a potential for adverse impacts and a long-term precedent-setting concern. We'll move on here and talk a little bit about the signs. So as far as the wall signs go, there are two wall signs that exceed the maximum height and area for wall signs in the C1 district. That is the sign on the north elevation facing Lake Street and the sign on the west elevation facing Humboldt Avenue South, which are these two shown here. The maximum height for wall signs in the C1 district is 14 feet. These are just over 19 feet in area, or in height. And the maximum area is 45 square feet, and these are at just over 52 square feet in area. The sign facing the parking lot is just a little bit too tall. This one is just over 16 feet in height and meets the minimum area requirements, or maximum area requirements, excuse me. And then for the freestanding signs, the signs proposed on the ATM machines are actually freestanding signs per the zoning code. So what you see here is signs on top of each ATM, and then a second panel in the middle of each ATM. The maximum number of freestanding signs allowed on a zoning lot is one. The maximum height of a sign is eight feet. The signs at the top of the ATMs here are 11.9 feet in height and exceed the maximum height allowed, and then a variance is needed for the maximum number. For the wall signs, again, staff finds that there are no unique circumstances here to merit the flexibility in the wall sign regulations. No unique circumstances here, or unique identification needs for the building. This is a new building. The element at the corner here is really just architectural to provide for the additional sign height. The signs are just barely over the maximum area requirement and could easily be reduced to the 45 square feet allowed. The height would get them just kind of above the canopy here. So that modification is something that would still allow for reasonable identification of the property while bringing the sign down to a more pedestrian level that would be more in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. For the freestanding signs, again, staff does not find that there are practical difficulties or unique circumstances for the sign height. Having panels both on the ATM and above the ATM seems duplicative and unnecessary. If these sign panels at the top of the ATM were removed, the only variance needed would be for the number of signs. Staff does find that there are practical difficulties for the number of signs here. Having the bank's identification on each TM, ATM, does seem like a reasonable use of the property to provide customers identification when they're pulling up to these facilities. As far as the site plan review goes, there were only a few landscaping items that required alternative compliance. Staff has conditions of approval in the site plan review section to address each of those items. So just to summarize here, we are recommending approval of the expansion of non-conforming use for the drive-through facility, denial of the variance for the maximum parking requirements, denial of the variance for the wall signs, approval of the variance for the number of freestanding signs with the condition of approval that the sign panels above the ATM machines be removed, and approval of the site plan review application with a recommendation that the maximum number of parking stalls on the site not exceed 17, and that the areas of the site that are currently parking stalls that would no longer be allowed to be parking be converted to landscaping. And then some landscaping requirements to bring the site into compliance with Site Planner Review Chapter. Three bike parking stalls would be recommended near the entrance at the corner of West Lake Street and Humboldt Avenue South, and some standard conditions related to window tinting and mechanical equipment. There was a letter in your packets today from the Echo Neighborhood expressing their support for the sign variances and the parking variance. With that, I will close, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and if you could focus your presentation on the need for the various variances, that would be good. So please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
If you don't mind, stand at the center microphone. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Brian Reno with StanTech Architecture, and here on behalf of Wells Fargo. And probably our, the primary focus of our discussions today is relative to the need for the parking variance. Unlike many new uses going into other pedestrian overlay districts, this is an existing use that combines two locations into one. And Wells Fargo's goal is to reduce the amount of real estate it has on two, on two opposing corners into one site. And unlike many of the other uses, I believe, today they know how many of their customers and employees use bike, walk, and public transportation. And because they're condensing on two, they're really eliminating almost a set over 70 parking spaces on two sites is their objective, to go to this site with 36. And in analyzing their, their existing customer transactions today, they were able to reduce dramatically the drive-up, the drive-up usage on the site from seven lanes to two lanes. And it's, it's really in their interest. They don't want to be a large landowner for a retail property like this. They want to minimize their land investment. Their goal is to, at the same time, to serve their customers' needs. So knowing the existing traffic usage and mode usage of their customers, they've looked really hard at this, and we've complied with really everything but the, a small sign variance, which we'll be able to deal with, and the parking. So essentially, we, we believe today, the, the Greenway Bike Path, the, the Transit Center, and the bus routes all exist today, yet we know how the customers use the site. And our, our primary concern is that if we only have 17 parking spaces, we know we have 21 employees today. We know our traffic demand and actual usage in the brands tells us we need 17 to 20 parking spaces for customers, depending upon the time of day. So we have a real concern that by not providing adequate parking for existing employees and existing customers, that will force people to use the neighborhood parking areas on the street when they should be for safety reasons, for access reasons, and for convenience reasons, using parking provided by Wells Fargo on the site. And that's essentially our, you know, our driving concern. Wells Fargo, again, doesn't, they, parking lots are an overhead and expense item for the bank. If they didn't think they needed them to serve the customers and the community, they would not put them in. And we, we also, we have, we have added bicycle facilities. We have reoriented the design of the building to address the street in the corner. We've already increased the landscaping by, on the site from what it is today by 50%, reduced the overall lot coverage on the site. And, you know, that's essentially our argument. We want to meet today's needs, and the bank would really like to consolidate its land use, opening up other parcels in the neighborhood for redevelopment when it moves to this site.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions for the speaker? If there are none, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Again, this is item number four. Yes?
I live at a property. Hello. I'm Margaret Appleby, and this is my son Kevin. And we live at the property that's just adjacent to the, of the bank that you're going to be putting up. And I just want to be sure that you're not going to be taking away any of our, our parking space in the back. And our little island that we have on the side there, the Fifth National Bank, I believe it was called at the time, gave to us many years ago. And as I understand it, you're going to have a alley or street cutting right by our property. And I'm just wondering how that's going to go through so that it doesn't cut off any of our property back there.
Okay. And maybe you can clarify which, which property is it, or what is your address?
3017 Irving Avenue South.
Okay, okay. And maybe I'll ask Kimberly if she can help clarify that.
So I believe they are the property that's directly south of this driveway that comes in from Irving Avenue South. So they're the property that takes advantage of this driveway easement that comes in off the alley that was established when the alley was vacated back in the 70s. So this driveway access would not be changing at this point in time. Wells Fargo has shown that they will be retaining that easement and that the access into the parking space for the Appleby property won't be impacted as part of the project.
Okay. So nothing's going to change there, then? Our little island's going to stay there?
So this, yeah, so this here.
Oh, okay. With that trees and everything.
Yeah, it's going to stay exactly as it is today.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine with me. And the wall is staying up?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Please come to the center microphone.
I'm Sally Head. I live at 3029 Humboldt Avenue South, which is directly across the street to the east. So I'm next to Sons of Norway. And, sorry I'm late, I couldn't find a place to park. But I would like to request that you grant them any and all parking spaces that they're requesting, because the people, if they don't have enough parking spaces, their workers and people who visit them are going to park on Humboldt Avenue, which is where I live. And I sit there and I watch all the people, and I talk to them. And they're all the people who work in the Laken-Hannipin area. And the reason they park on Humboldt is because it's the closest one to Calhoun Square that is not have meters, and there's no permits there. So Humboldt, right on Wells Fargo there, is always full. There is no additional parking there. So if they're expecting their employees to have to park somewhere else, that's going to create a hardship. So by not granting them all the parking spaces they're asking for is going to create a problem. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have five applications before us, alteration to non-conforming use, three variances, and a site plan review. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, I do have a question for staff. If, if we deny the parking variance and it goes down to 17 parking stalls, it doesn't appear on the plan that 17 parking stalls fits very well in, in any quadrant. So it's probably a combination of two quadrants. Any sense of, of what other site impacts there might be? Because I'm guessing trash receptacle or trash storage might have to move to the north, and maybe the parking on the south end is gone, and, and any thoughts about what that might look like?
So we didn't want to be too specific about which parking stalls had to go away, understanding that there might be other site implications or other things that need to be reconfigured when they're losing that many stalls. Clearly, the parallel stalls coming in from Irving are kind of the low-hanging fruit in terms of eliminating some parking stalls. Those parallel stalls are unique, I will say. Parking on the south side of the site, again, on the other side of the alley, is probably the next best candidate, but understanding that that may, yes, result in some relocation of perhaps their trash enclosure or whatever it is, but this is, would remain their property unless they choose to subdivide and sell it, so they'd be able to utilize that however they wish. But you'll note the condition of approval in the staff report is that if there are large areas of parking that are removed, that those areas be converted to landscaping instead of just pavement that people are going to park on anyway.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Gisselman?
I guess I don't, I don't have a question for staff. And I'm not going to make a motion at this time, but I guess I just wanted to kind of start a point of, of discussion. I'm curious what other members of the commission think. But in a situation like this where we have the amount of existing parking that we do, I feel like I'm somewhat persuaded that this is a scenario where this type of variance should be granted. And I, I'm not, I'm not saying that I can totally support the, the amount of spaces that the applicant is actually requesting, but given the amount of stalls currently on the site, I think I read in the staff report that it's 48 existing stalls. And given the fact that it sounds like the applicant is going to discontinue their presence at the Sons of Norway building, which would mean that they're not going to be using the parking there anymore, so it's going to be combined into this, into the lots adjacent to this one facility. And considering that, and again, when this bank was established here, it wasn't, there wasn't the existing pedestrian overlay. And considering that, in a way, I do feel like when we're talking about bank transactions, I mean, there, I feel like there is some, some argument that perhaps customers, I don't know if this is legitimate or not, but perhaps customers do want the safety of having their vehicle there. You know, again, I'm not really talking about the, I just withdrew $40 from my checking account kind of transaction, but there's something about this type of business that just makes me think that it does make sense, especially considering the existing customer base, that there's a need for more parking than perhaps, you know, perhaps some, some other type of business that would be being proposed here. That's not to say that the, the mode-sharing goals do seem to be problematic, especially from the perspective of what the applicant is doing to encourage existing employees to find different ways to get their share rides, especially considering the, you know, the, the incidence of mass transit in the area. But I know that's a lot, but those are just some of the things that were kind of swirling around in my head, and I'm wondering if anybody else in this group is, is thinking any of the same things.
Okay. Commissioner Magrino?
Well, I guess I was pretty surprised to see, you know, 100% of the employees at the site were driving. That is pretty surprising to me for that neighborhood, if you have 22 employees, and that's kind of what the split is, especially in that neighborhood. And a 90% goal similarly is kind of low. I think it's probably possible that you're sort of inducing some of that demand from the employees by having free parking available on-site.
Sort of is what it is right now. I think Wells Fargo, we, is committed to the Transit Pass idea and would implement that, but I think it's, again, there's, there's reasons for safety. Certainly, the employees that open, they really do need to park on-site and get immediate access to the building. And similarly, we see, not just with Wells Fargo, but with financial institutions all over the country we work with, customers for certain types of transactions do, do want to be able to park on the site. And I think that while Wells Fargo's committed to the transit concept, many of the employees I worked with- of the employees that work with their bus and ride to their offices downtown and to other areas, it's, they can't tell an employee they must take transit, you know? So it is, we're just being honest with what the demand is today. We can't, you know, they're, they're very willing to put forth inducements to Transit Pass and so forth, but at the same time, they've been operating there since 1973. So they know, they know the trend, and that's why they're reducing the parking and the drive-up as much as they are. They feel that that can still support the customer demand, so.
And I think we, we all kind of understand the city obviously can't order you to have a fourth of your employees bike to work, but I think we're just trying to keep in mind what's good for the neighborhood in the next 30, 40 years. Potentially, this building might be there for a long time, so it's kind of hard to support, you know, that site's probably, what, two-thirds pavement, mostly surface parking? And so it's sort of hard to swallow.
For purposes of your conversation, I will throw out, if this site were not in the PO or if it were not subject to that 25% reduction, they would be allowed 23 spaces, which is a slight increase from the 17 that they're allowed with the PO reduction. So just some context there.
Are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, alteration of non-conforming use for a drive-through facility.
And is there, we have a motion and a second to approve item A, the alteration of a non-conforming use. Is there any-